It is now 6:30 and it's time to call the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council to order. By way of roll call, we have excused Councilmember Karen Lang and Mayor Mike Winder tonight, and we look forward to them rejoining us next week. Also to help us get through the many items of our agenda meeting tonight, we have City Manager Mr. Wayne Pyle and our City Recorder Ms. Sherry McKendrick on the dais with us tonight. Each week, as City Councilmembers take turns with an opening ceremony to set the tone and mood of the meeting, and this week, by chance, it falls to me. And so what I would like to do is relate to you a short story and then invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance. But the story was, that I wanted to share with you tonight, became, I think, very timely because before this meeting, we had several members of our community gather in the lobby to be recognized for a clean and beautiful award. And also, as I drove to City Hall today, I noticed the several members of our crossing guard unit that's out now that many schools are back in session. And just, I've been reminded of many small tasks that seemingly go on our city and how much they mean to us. And so I wanted to just relay this story to you real quick before the pledge. It's about a man, his name is Charles Plum, and he was a U.S. Navy pilot back in Vietnam. And he flew 75 combat missions, and on 76, his plane was destroyed by a surface-to-air missile. Mr. Plum ejected, and he parachuted into enemy hands and was captured and imprisoned in a Viet Cong prison for six years. And so, had learned many lessons, and with that, I guess this poignant one here was, after he was released to six years, he was having dinner in a restaurant, and a man came up to him, and he says, "Your name is Plum, right? You flew jet fighters in Vietnam from the aircraft carrier Kitty Hawk, and you were shot down." "How in the world did you know that?" asked Plum. "I packed your parachute," the man replied. Plum gasped in surprise and gratitude. The man pumped his hand and said, "Well, I guess it worked." And Plum assured him, "It sure did. If your chute hadn't worked, I wouldn't be here today." So Plum, he spent that night and other nights thinking just about how, oh, you know, that man would have looked in his old Navy uniform, how he was a pilot and this man was a sailor, and they usually didn't consort much with each other. But he thought for many hours how the sailor had sat in the depths of a ship on a long wooden table perhaps, in the bows of the ship, carefully weaving together strings and silk from each chute. Each time he did so, he was holding the hands of a fighter pilot that he didn't know in his hands. And so, with that Plum, he asked the question, he says, "Who is packing your parachute?" Everyone has someone who provides what they need to make it through each day. He also points out that there's many different kinds of parachutes that we need, that when he was shot down over enemy territory, he needed not only his physical parachute, but a mental parachute, an emotional parachute, and a spiritual parachute. So, sometimes, I guess the thought I wanted to leave you is that sometimes, life gives us daily challenges, and we might miss what's important. We may fail to say hello, please, or thank you, or maybe congratulate someone on a clean and beautiful award, or their work as a crossing guard, or give them a compliment, or just say something nice for no reason. But this week, and as we recite this pledge, that I hope that you'll remember and recognize those people that pack your parachutes. Please join me now.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for letting me relay that to you and for you joining me. Item four on our agenda is a time we have for special recognitions. And if you're wondering, this, about a month or so ago, we had a cabinet member from China come in, was part of the highest ranking Chinese official ever in West Valley City, or maybe even Utah for the matter. And so we gave him some time. Oftentimes, we'll give scouts the opportunity as well on special recognitions. Last week, they were stealthy, and I couldn't point them out, but this week, I think we are free from that. And so we will move on to item five, past our special recognitions, to our approval of minutes of the August 14th meeting. So, council members?
Move for approval of August 14th, 2012, regular meeting minutes. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve minutes of August 14th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Here's the minutes are approved unanimously. Item six is our comment period, which we have every week and limit to 30 minutes and five minutes of speaker. We have a sign-up sheet of one tonight, so we'll ask Mr. Tapiosa. Did I say that right, or even close?
Yes, close.
Okay, if you want to come up to the microphone here, and we'll give you five minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Salih Tapusoa, and I'm, I guess that story you told, I'm a Vietnam veteran. We escorted the USS Kitty Hawk. I guess I'm here to solicit your help, and also to probably just to inform you, on August the 12th, there was a flooding from the canal that is going 40th West, between 41 South and 35 South. And I guess, Mr. Beulah, I guess you are my history. But anyway, my house was flooded, in the basement, this was August the 12th. And I've been trying to, I've been here to see the city engineers and also the canal And at the meantime, my, I guess my house is getting kind of, we had asked people to bring their blowers in, and so they did bring those blowers in, and it helped. So that's why I'm here. I really don't know whose, I've had some conversation with the canal people, some good people, and also with the city engineers, but the answers are not satisfactory. So that's why I'm here. I don't know if, but I just felt that maybe, perhaps I would just come and report this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And this forum is not necessarily to have a dialogue back and forth, but I know everyone here has, I've heard that. We appreciate you bringing us up to speed on that tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Did anyone else in the audience come to utilize a comment period tonight? And we will move past that, and we have several items of business tonight, including a public hearing. And each item that the council will discuss, whether these items in the public hearing and the ordinance changes or the resolutions, we had discussed previously in our study meeting, which is 4:30 in the adjacent building, but now, tonight is the night to take formal action on them. And we'll ask our City Manager, Mr. Wayne Pyle, to please introduce the public hearing regarding application ZT-1 2012.
Okay, thank you, sir. Excuse me. And we have two public hearings tonight, and of course, we'll have to open and close those separately, but I figured that I would take a second here and outline what the three actions are that are going to be associated with those two public hearings as they concern the same matter. Jake was going to show the map for me of the geographic area that we're talking about, but I can describe as well. Looks like he was grabbing the gentleman on the way out. Okay, so, you'll remember as council, we've discussed this over the last couple of weeks. Back in the year 2000, we adopted an ordinance that was called the, or allowed for, what we call a transfer of development rights, or created what we call a TDR, overlay zone. And the purpose for that was to encourage and facilitate development in places that would be able to transfer certain development rights to another area of town where we had designated we wanted to preserve wetlands and be able to, in the future, build parks. And this was to, the idea and design of this was to be able to allow accomplishment of both those goals. And we did do that to some degree before the development market changed significantly, worsened, as some would probably say. We were able to accomplish those goals, and a lot of that was based on property values of a raw land aspect. Anyway, the area that that includes is, I have the address here, so I can be real specific about it. It's roughly 6,800 West, or between 6,800 West and 60th, 24, 6,800 West and 60th West, and then 24th South and Parkway Boulevard. So the first public hearing is to request, or accept public input requesting a zone tax change, in which would in effect repeal Chapter 726. And that's what authorized the transfer of development rights, overlay zone, and therefore that consent program. The second public hearing, and I'll just introduce that as well right now, sir, if that's okay. In the second public hearing, what we'll be asking you to do is actually reduce that open space area that we designated as having the TDRs, or being able to transfer TDRs to. And this is a basic map of the outline, or the address that I outlined earlier. So we would be reducing, or proposing to reduce, that area from 160 acres, which it was originally designated as, down to 46 acres, and also remove the TDRs, overlay zone, from the zoning map. So those are the two actions that would be associated with the second public hearing. And with that, sir, ready for any comment?
Okay. So thank you for that introduction, and I said we'll have three items of action tonight, but they're all related, but somewhat separate actions for this council to consider. So I will, I hereby open the public hearing regarding application ZT-1 2012 filed by West Valley City requesting a zone tax change of the transfer of development rights, overlay zone. Has anybody come to speak regarding this application? Okay? Sir, if you'd come up to the microphone, and if you'd please state your name and address, so we'll be compliant with the law and our meeting minutes.
My name is Dana Scott Day. My address is 6692 West Hunter Crest Circle, directly across Parkway Boulevard from the proposed change. I got a letter a while back, and I came down to the hall here and asked what exactly the plan was, and he said that they want to industrialize it, turn Parkway into a five-lane road, and that the wetland would be preserved. And I wasn't real hip on the idea, but didn't say much and couldn't make that meeting anyways. But now, it looks like they want to encompass the wetland as well, which, in my estimation, if they industrialize, it's going to lower my property value, is going to destroy my sovereignty in my backyard with a truck drought going through my backyard. And even if I could sell to move out, I would never get market value for it, even close, because the desire to live there is gone with a five-lane road going through there. And I would just like to oppose my objection to the whole wetland idea. You know, if you want to send the trucks some other way, I might be able to get behind it, but it's hard enough to sleep and get any peace and quiet in your own backyard with the motorcycles and the small traffic that we have now. You start adding big rigs, and box trucks, and squealing air brakes, there's no sovereignty anymore, and it's not worth living there. So I highly object the whole wetland idea.
Anybody have any questions?
Just my question is, you object to reducing the wetland?
I do, I object.
Or you object to the wetlands?
I object to it. I want it to stay the way it is.
Oh, okay, so you're not objecting to the wetlands?
I want it to stay that, that's how it is. It was the whole reason I moved to West Valley.
And with that, Mr. City Manager, is this area here, under the proposals tonight, continues to stay wetlands?
Yeah, that's correct.
Under the plans, right?
Pardon me. Jake, will you put up the second map? So the second map shows, if I remember correctly, the 46 acres that it remains at. Is that the same map?
Yes, current map.
This is the 160.
That's the current plan line.
Okay, I get, I think you're talking about the mountain. I guess I don't understand how your map's laid out. I see a highlighted area, is that what is going to be industrialized, or is that what's being protected?
No, if you can see this map.
First, let me answer that question too, sir. We're not changing any zoning, or proposing to change any zoning, or actually proposing any development, so I'm not sure where the industrialization idea came from.
I came to this office and said, "Well, what is this about?" And I said, "Well, the future plan is, is to industrialize this area."
Ah, okay, all right. Probably what they told you is, the general plan, which is the long-term plan of the city, it's been in effect for a number of years and modified a couple of different times, probably has some of that area zoned industrial, but we don't have any development plans or projects that are going in there at this time, or that we know of. There are some development plans going kind of more further north up there to 201, so I don't know, maybe that was also referred to as well. But this proposal here isn't a proposal that we start, or do, or create any kind of industrial, actual industrial development.
Okay.
Now, also to the second part, to sort of clarify the map question, I think what I'll do is have Steve come up here for a second, so maybe he can kind of point out the whole thing. I think that you were correct, Corey, or, sorry, that the 46 acres is that portion over there to the west, but I'm going to let Steve kind of delineate that for us, so we know for sure.
That area that there was on right now was.
Yeah, Steve, can you speak to that? Where's the 46 acres that would be left?
Yes, sir. So on the map that's on the screen out, the area that's outlined in the green dashed line, those are the 46 acres that are actually currently owned by the city and will remain as wetland, open space area. So that area would remain open.
Okay. Now, the overall shaded green area, that's where the 160 acres was, correct?
Right, in the previous map.
All right. Now, the fact that we are taking off this TDR overlay doesn't mean that that's going to develop, doesn't mean that the zoning has changed. It's exactly the same zoning as it was before.
Right, you still have, south of the canal, you still have agricultural zoning, so that doesn't change. It's just the, that open space designation area gets reduced.
Steve, could you also kind of go, I know we don't have the zoning map up here right now, but just from your memory, can you kind of go over where largely the different zoning designations in the area are?
Actually, we do have a zoning map.
If that's okay, sir.
So, this is a zoning map, you can see, so the area that's shaded in gray, that was the TDR overlay zone, so the area where you can transfer density out of. So you can see south of the canal, which is about halfway through the map that runs east and west. On the south end, you have A1 zoning, or agricultural zoning, that requires one acre lots. And then on the north, you have, kind of to the west, you have manufacturing, and on the east side, the portion that's shaded was zoned agricultural, which is a half acre lots. So all of that underlying zoning does not change.
Okay, and that is all agriculturally zoned right now. But like I was mentioning as well, we see where the M parcels are, those are manufacturing zoned parcels. They have been before, they haven't changed either. That may be where somebody was giving you that idea.
Well, no, because I was specifically asking about that, because I couldn't make that meeting, because I have to work that day, and you can't get out of work where I work. Anyways, I tried to make it, but I couldn't, and I was totally opposed to that being rezoned as well, because he was quick to point out that this is going to be industrialized, they're going to build a road out here, make light at 64, and, you know, it's basically going to be a truck drought.
Yeah, there is going to be development out there here in the near future. The 160 acres that we're dealing with tonight basically corresponds with the shaded area that's agricultural, it'll stay agricultural. And the other ones, even though they are, and you're right, I mean, that area to the north and to the west over there by 201, even though that probably will develop here in the, in the near future, we haven't changed, that's always been that way, that's been zoned, those designations.
And I have no problem with that at all.
Okay.
As long as we can send the trucks some other way. I mean, my room's, my bedroom's only 100 feet off the road. You know, you get trucks with the air brakes rolling through there day and night, and I work, I work shift work, so it doesn't matter if it's day or night, it's still going to affect me every day.
Okay. And, I mean, and there are roads being built in that area as well, and I can't remember if 64th is one of the routes, but also as well, that doesn't have anything to do with this.
Parkway, like the rest of the Parkway.
Right.
That would be awesome, that would reduce noise, that would slow people down without stopping them and hearing acceleration and braking, and that was some of, one of my points that I wanted to make tonight, too, was that, you know, a five-lane may not be the best answer for everybody's piece.
Anyway, sir.
No, thanks for the input on that. These are, the three items are a little interrelated, and then there's kind of the whole big general plan question here, but I guess regarding this application, I guess we need to kind of get back on focus of just the repealing Chapter 726 of the West Valley Code regarding this transfer of development rights ordinance. So, did you have a comment?
I just had a comment about roads, and again, this is a little bit on the side of the issue, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, but the Mountain View Corridor Highway has a really interesting interchange, and most of that traffic will be going on 2,400 South. Is that correct?
It's not Parkway.
So it's further north.
And it's south of 201, it's somewhere right in that area, I can't remember exactly what the south is, but it is in that area. It bubbles the corridor, and there will be a new interchange in there, yeah, roughly.
But the east-west route to that is, is just to the north of the Windco, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, but also keep in mind, when we're talking about east-west access to it, it's not like there's going to be new east-west, especially at any kind of distance. Of course, there will be right there associated with the interchange, but the existing road network is what will feed that from east to the west.
Where the road dead ends on the west side, where that's going to be?
Well, it connects to Mountain View, yeah. It's kind of a funny interchange in there.
Yeah, it's not a usual configuration.
Correct. Okay. Good discussion on that. Public hearing is still open, has somebody else, anybody else come to speak regarding this application? Same thing, we need name and address.
My name is Brad Rushton, I live at 5491 West, 4100 South, West Valley City, Utah. And I'm, we, I represent the, that owns probably the largest portion of the property that's this ordinance applies to. And we support, we support A and, do you want me to say B too, so I don't have to come up again, or? We support both A and B, the three actions that you're taking, we'd like to see you pass it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does anybody else that's come to speak regarding? Mr. Markham?
This is it.
Mike Markham, 3008 Alice Circle. And this doesn't necessarily reflect to this action, but I just have a question for you, which I don't understand.
On the green, on the green map back here, we see where we've got the big jog into the right towards the canal, or whatever that is. See what I mean? How come we don't do things more square? Why doesn't the line go straight? I see a lot of the, you know, in Sandy, there's little pockets of Salt Lake County property, and I can understand ours, City, West Valley City zigzagging line down the Jordan River, but how come we don't square things up? How come when you, when we take over a piece of property, it's not square? Other than, you don't want that piece of property because it's not desirable. But we have little segments, I know Public Works has to deal with a lot of things, that, you know, a little segment of property goes off this way, so they have to snake in through to take care of this, or to take care of that. Why don't we do things square?
Pretty simple answer to that, if I can, sir, which is, if I understood the question correctly. Basically, the way these end up getting set up, you have that overall overlay zone that was originally put in place, but the 46 acres that, as Mr. Pastore pointed out, comprise what West Valley City now owns, and why that's not square is because we really acquired that over the years, sort of parcel by parcel. So the configuration from an outside sort of line standpoint really was determined by what the lot lines were and how we acquired the property.
So, Jake, are you the green one again?
The last one, Jake.
But I guess you don't, how come it didn't come like this?
Probably because the owners didn't want us to buy the land.
Well, when you're altering this.
Yeah, that's right. You can also kind of see the lot lines in there, Mr. Markham, so you'll see there's a bunch of small ones with the dark lines, and then to the west, there's a big, more open lot, we just weren't able to acquire those pieces.
But when you're doing, changing the overlay, overlay, because it's here, you're moving it to here, couldn't we move that in there?
We probably could, yeah. I think we determined it that way, just because that's what we owned.
Okay. Jake? Thank you. Has anybody else come speak on this application? Okay, seeing none, I will close this public hearing and put the action and discussion before the council. Questions?
Move for approval of ordinance 1236?
35.
Oh, 35, okay.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, ordinance 1235, which, is there any discussion to that motion? So I'll make a comment here on this. Many of you know I serve and represent the city on a national board, and the transfer of development rights is a tool that many cities use across the nation to help them with their general plan of development, some of their open space with the city. And since we've had this ordinance for, I think, 12 years, I think it's been, to some degree or another, very, very successful, but with the successes we've had of being able to preserve these 46 acres is a good success, and then the successes of being able to develop that 5,600 West corridor in the midst of a recession has been pretty remarkable, and I think leads to make things like this, as stated in the issue, things, in our issue papers, to be accomplished. And so it's been a, it's been a good, it's been a good thing, but time to move on, I guess, would be my, my comment on this. There's no others to that, I guess we can call a question and ask all those in favor of ordinance 1235, but please say aye.
Aye.
If they're opposed. Okay, so, moving past that now, we'll segue into the other public hearing regarding amending the general plan and amending the zoning map, which we've heard a little bit of comment on, but has anybody come to speak any further to those two items tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. And council, we have ordinance 1236 to consider.
Motion to approve ordinance 12 dash 36.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion to approving ordinance 1236? Seeing none, we'll ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Appears also to be unanimous. We also have action on 1237, which is the amending the zoning map.
I would move for approval of ordinance 12 dash 37.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion to that motion of approving ordinance 1237? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also is approved. Okay, we now move to our, with that being taken care of, we now move to our three resolutions tonight, and ask Mr. Pyle, please introduce resolution 12127 for us, please.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would authorize us to enter into an agreement with Cettington and Christensen, the CPAs that do our audit, and have performed our audit for several years in the past, to do the audit for the fiscal year that just ended, June 30th of this year.
Okay. Any questions regarding this? One question I wanted to ask was, one of the main focuses that I know this audit team looks at every year is our federal grants, and is that something that they're going to be doing this year, or?
They definitely will be looking at it again this year, because that's one of the major components, at least from a complexity standpoint, they always do. But then they also do varying levels of look from year to year, and I honestly can't remember if this year they were planning on doing a heavier look than they normally do or not. Jim, can you freshen my memory there?
But I guess it also depends on the level of federal grants we receive, or?
They, we basically receive the same federal grants usually from year to year, unless you've got things going on like the energy block grants that we received a couple of years ago for stipuleous money, that kind of thing.
Yes, sir. The federal grants are required by law to be examined closely every year. They term that a single audit, and that's one of the things that we're required to have the auditors look into very closely each year. have the auditors look into very closely each year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, I think a motion would be in order on.
Motion for approval of resolution 12 dash 127.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second before this body to approve resolution 12127. Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay, seeing none, call the question, and ask those in favor to please say aye. Aye. Appears to be unanimous, and we'll look forward to the report of Caddington and Christensen regarding this year's audit. Mr. Pyle, please introduce 12128, please.
Thank you, sir. This proposed agreement would allow West Valley City and Melinda Checket Hibbert to contract for the provision of administrative law judge services that Ms. Hibbert would perform.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any need for clarification, or any questions regarding this resolution? No? Motion would be in order?
Move for approval of resolution 12128.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, which is an agreement for administrative law judge services. Is there any discussion to that motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Also appears unanimous. Final resolution 12129, please.
Thank you, sir. As we have been working on the Fairborn Station project, we're realigning roads, we're putting in new infrastructure in terms of curb gutter, sidewalk, side strip, that kind of thing, we need to accept a dedication of pieces along Market Street and Lehman Avenue from UTA. That's the purpose of this resolution.
Any questions on this resolution, or motion?
Move for approval of resolution 12 dash, I'm going to get back here, 128.
129.
Excuse me.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve resolution 12129? It's right outside the windows here, so any discussion to that? Okay, seeing none, we'll ask all those in favor to, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. And that also is approved. We'll look forward to seeing more improvements to that section of our city. Is there any need for executive session tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none, this body will, and no other business, this body will stand adjourned.[1776.44]